Twenty-four acres that came with a herd of sheep. And they thought it would be interesting to have the sheep and have them bred and have, you know, lambs and I don't know why they got their kid from Brooklyn and kid from Wells and didn't know anything about reason. Sheep lasted about two or three years and then.
Mutton for all my friends.
Yep. That was the end of that.
Get break out the lime jelly.
Ducks, geese, chickens.
Sheep, but just, I mean, they're interesting.
Ready to go? Yeah. We have somebody, oh, we do have somebody back there. I'm sorry. You're doing so well being here. Well done. Yep, we're ready to go. Ready? Good. Ready?
We are ready.
Ringers off.
Yes.
Good evening. Welcome to this meeting of the Norfolk Select Board. It is Tuesday, September 10th at approximately 5:00 PM. My name is Kevin Calcutt and I am joined by my fellow board members, Chris Weider and Cece Van Tyne. We're also joined by our town administrator, Blythe Robinson. As a reminder, this meeting is being audio and video recorded consistent with the open meeting laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It will be rebroadcasted to NCTV's government cable channel as well as uploaded to NCTV's YouTube channel. I think we're actually also live right now.
Yeah.
Many ways to consume this evening.
Exciting.
With that, everybody, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have only but one item on our agenda this evening, and it is a very important one. After a long process with a lot of work by a lot of committed people, we have three finalists for our fire chief. Those three individuals will be coming before us this evening. We'll be spending a little time with each of them and then at which point we'll be making our appointment, all things falling into places they should. Blythe, any background context you'd like to provide before we get started?
Sure. We advertised for this position early in the summer and received 29 applications primarily from candidates in Massachusetts and some from surrounding states. Three employees, myself, Scott Bragden, and the interim fire chief went through those and based on the job qualifications, we narrowed it down to eight people to interview. Those took place a couple of weeks later and the interview team was again, myself, Scott, the fire chief from Foxborough sat in on the, as an outsider to help us with that and the deputy chief, excuse me, interim chief was a observer of that. We ranked all of those interviews and from there chose four candidates we thought were the best candidates for our position and put them through an assessment center process in August with an outside firm that we retained to do that work. They came back and said of the four candidates, one scored very well, two scored well, and one scored less than, a little less than the other three. And so based upon that, I met individually with all three of them to talk more directly about the position, working together, the priorities of the town. And they're, all three of them are here tonight to meet with you. We've scripted a couple of questions you might want to ask. We didn't go further than that just because of the time limitations so that you can get to know them a little bit better and then after that I'm prepared to lead you through what I would like to make as a recommendation.
Very good. Anybody have questions, comments, concerns about format?
We can ask our own questions, though.
Sure. Yeah, these are ones we just thought might be helpful.
I did homework.
Excellent. Excellent. Yes.
Credit for it.
I just think that we're limited to the time we have.
I see the time. I see the time.
So how many questions you came up with?
Forty.
Wow.
You have forty?
No, I'm kidding.
Because I have only forty-one.
Oh.
That was concerned.
All right. I'll defer to your forty-one.
Poor individuals.
Yes.
I'll feed the floor to your forty-one.
All right. So if we're okay with the format, we're good with how everything lines up, why don't we go ahead and get started?
Scott will bring in the first candidate.
Beautiful.
Who is Paul Berry. Paul is the deputy chief in the town of Walpole.
Beautiful. Welcome, sir. How are you doing tonight?
Very well, Mr. Berry.
Very nice to meet you.
Chris Weider. How are you?
Kevin Calcutt. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Excuse me. How are you? Good to see you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for sitting down tonight. Really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Very honored to be here tonight.
So we have a couple of questions for you, but if you'd like to start with saying a couple of things about yourself, please feel free.
Sure. Again, I'm very honored to be here tonight. This is quite the process. Just like a little bit about myself, my wife and I grew up in Walpole, met in high school and raised our three kids in town. Our oldest graduated from college last year, middle one is in college and the youngest one is in college as well. We're from the area. Very happy and excited to stay in this area. My career, I started as a call firefighter in 1993 with the Walpole Fire Department. Transitions into a provisional firefighter shortly thereafter and during that time I earned the opportunity to become a full-time firefighter with Walpole. While I was a firefighter at the firefighter rank, I was promoted to, I asked to become the training coordinator for the town and I also served as a safe instructor. Shortly thereafter, I was promoted to lieutenant and about a little over three years ago, almost four years ago, I became the deputy chief of the town of Walpole. And in that time, during that timeframe, I received quite a bit of opportunity to learn and grow as a fire administrator and I think that provides me with a great opportunity to help work with the town of Norfolk. I look forward to the opportunity.
Very good. Thank you. Cece, would you like to start with some questions?
I'm going first. Very stressful. All right. So I understand that we're limited in time, so I've broken down. I did have like ten questions, but I'm boiling it down. So I'm going to create multiple questions into one, so if you forgive me. So I'll start with one, which for you, because I know a little bit about your background, maybe lay up, I'm going to use some sporting analogies tonight, I know me and analogies, but I think you've probably seen or read about some of the issues that we've had surrounding the public safety building or buildings and that we had started with a particular amount of money that was going to be assigned to fire as well as to police and that due to overages on the police side, there is not as much left for fire. I understand that you've been, you were heavily involved in the Walpole building.
Correct.
So you've got a lot of experience in that regard. My question would be that sort of is twofold. How do you see your role, we're assuming now that you're the chief, how do you see your role as it relates to a new building? And then the second question, which I'll re-ask if you need me to, is how do you see your role if, which could happen, right? There's only maybe 2.7, 2.8 million left, however much is left. How much is left?
About 2.8.
2.8 left. And right, it'll go to the town, the town will decide if there's, if we're going to take out more debt to build more. If the town decides en masse that that isn't what they're going to do, what do you see? How would you handle that, right? So it's twofold question. You're the chief, based upon your experience, which I understand is significant, how would you handle it as a new building versus a run-out?
So as a new building, I believe our goal would be to establish a committee to assess the needs of the department and exactly kind of find out what type of station we do need, how big, what best value we could obtain from it, from the process. My goal would be to basically plan the station and have it essentially cost out through a vetting process and then we're able to find out if exactly we could afford it, if we could not afford it. And if we couldn't afford it, we'd have to assess, is there stuff that we could cut? Can we make the station, lack of a better term, less frills, but more of a very functional station to provide the needs that we can service to grow and expand as the department potentially does grow and expand as the town needs. The second part, if we weren't too able, if we were unable to fund a new station, again, we'd have to through a committee, take a look at and see what exactly needs, we really need to go with, do we need to add bays on, do we need to add the cruise quarters, do we need to do administrative work? It's, I think it would be an all-encompassing process to review, but again, same type of thing, what would be our primary goals and primary needs to take with that available money and use the resources that we have to again, provide the best department, the best station that the town could afford.
Do you want me to do my other two?
Go for it.
All right. Like I said, I pulled it down to three. I feel like I should get some credit for that later on in terms of beer or whatever. So my second question, which came from a tranche of questions, is, and I understand again from your background that you have some familiarity with this, so none of my questions are unfair. What are your thoughts on the call firefighters, the use of call firefighters to supplement resources for the town, pros and cons?
Sure. As I stated, I started off as a call firefighter and I can still remember the great sense of pride walking through that back door where it said employees only as a call firefighter and the commitment and the dedication it took to be a call firefighter, which is, which varies greatly from being a full-time firefighter. They have to work a full-time job elsewhere, but also be able to provide commitment to the town that they volunteered or working for. Have to make the commitment to drop whatever they're doing, missed birthday parties, holidays. I left my wife at a restaurant to go back as a call firefighter.
I thought you meant right now.
You know, it's that type of commitment, but it's a huge commitment and unfortunately, you know, nationwide, call firefighters are, the call services suffering from that availability as to what individuals have the time to commit to call departments. I think, you know, financially, they're a great resource to supplement the full-time department and they definitely provide a benefit and a service as their experienced firefighters, they know the community well and they can provide very, very solid support to the full-time department.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Finally, and these, so there's no surprise, these will be the same questions I'd be asking across the board, but something that's I think important to many communities, I know it's important to me, is part of the core values of a town or the core values of a department or of a board, is diversity and inclusion. And I'm wondering what it is, what initiatives that you've seen statewide or just that you've read about or that you've considered implementing, what would you do to consider or deal with diversity and inclusion within your department?
Sure. I think right off the bat Norfolk percentage-wise has two female firefighters and that's a very large percentage from surrounding areas and I think that's a great step. I think we'd look into different advertising methods to show that the department is hiring and make an opportunity to reach out to a wider, wider spectrum of applicants as opposed to, you know, I'd like to see, you know, who Norfolk has posted their job applications before and maybe, like you said, expand upon that. Sometimes just putting an ad in a different medium can bring back a very wide variety of applicants. I think that would be my first step to help support that.
Thank you very much. See how quick that was?
That was fantastic. Nicely done.
It was so quick. Expect cheers from the audience.
If I could ask you a couple of questions, if we're going to go right down the line here, the first one I have is if you could just talk to us for a little bit about your experience and your approach to managing a departmental budget?
Sure. Departmental budget. I've been involved with assisting my chief with the budget process from operations-wise to capital budget. We've looked down and we've sat, you know, what do we need to plan for the future for our equipment, what have cost embedded out, equipment. We've recently just had the opportunity to create a fire prevention officer position. We costed out the, our goal was to prevent, created at a certain rank that was unobtainable, so we had to recalibrate, come back and come back at a different rank and started at a different, at a different timeframe in the year. So looking through the budget and kind of figuring out where we can fit that individual, that process, how much money we had, it's a process that we worked hand-in-hand with and we were able to, I think we come, provide the best, the best service for the town.
Very good. Thank you. Just one other question from me, if you could talk to us for a little bit about your approach and perspective as it relates to mutual aid?
Sure. Mutual aid, it's, everybody around us does not have enough staffing to adequately handle every call that comes on in. We all work hand-in-hand together. I've come to Norfolk, Norfolk's come to Walpole, and I've worked with these individuals here and I've also worked with all the continuous communities. It's a valued resource that we all have and that we all utilize and the more we use it, the more comfortable we are with one another and it's not something that's going away anytime soon. So I'm very comfortable with the various departments around and working with those individuals.
Very good. Thank you. Chris?
Thank you. One of the things you mentioned in your questionnaire was the challenge with regard to the younger firefighters today.
Yes.
You know, we have budgets, we have collective bargaining agreements. So how do you retain the younger workforce, which I think you said is very educated, yet they don't have a lot of the trade skills?
Exactly.
And we obviously can't give them bonuses because of the collective bargaining. So how do you retain the younger firefighters? What is, what's, what can you expound upon? How do you, how do you do that today? Because that seems to be the biggest challenge facing Norfolk, especially as we've lost a lot of good firefighters because of pay and obviously opportunities elsewhere.
Sure, sure. Sometimes it's just an unavoidable, unavoidable opportunity for a firefighter to go to a bigger community, more money. Sometimes it's just not a good fit, but personally, I try to reach out to the younger individuals, try to engage with them on, you know, a day-to-day approach as I see them. Try to make myself available, interact with the individuals, find out, you know, a little bit about them, engage them and know that they're not just, they're not just a number, they're a vital cog in our organization and then they're valued and needed and wanted as well. It's, I think, like you said, the primary goal that I'd like to do is just reach out and show that I appreciate them and that I need them.
Next question is you're going from a $4 million budget.
Correct.
You're going to come down to about a $1.5 million budget. Your deputy chief.
Right.
I'm guessing you're in your 50s, early 50s, maybe late 40s. Why would you want to, you know, Walpole's a nice community.
Sure, sure.
Why would you want to leave all that? It sounds like a pretty good nest place to be to come down here.
You know, that's a great question and it is. I am very happy with my, honestly very happy where I am. I have great support from my chief and from the guys, but I just looked at this as an opportunity for me to grow. I think my whole career, my whole professional life, I've worked towards helping people and I think I know that my education, my training, my experience and the mentorship that I've received from my supervisors and my coworkers has helped groom me, groom me to become a chief and I think the Norfolk Fire Department is a, is a great department. As I said, very early on in my career, I had the opportunity to do some live burns and do some training with these guys. They opened me with welcome arms and throughout my career, they've been phenomenal to work with. They're a dedicated, passionate group of individuals that, and the few times that I've been in the station and I've gone to mutual aid calls with them, I've seen them on site, their apparatus is always heavy. There's always extra people hanging around the station. There's always, they're there when they don't, they don't have to be there. And to me, that just shows a great camaraderie of the department and it's, it looks like a great place to work and I would like, I would love the opportunity to work with them and help lead the department to the future.
Thank you. Thank you.
You good? Cece, any additional questions from you?
No, I said I was keeping it to three and the audience appreciated it.
Well, while we do have a few more minutes, I'll throw a couple more out there if that's all right with you. As you, Cece had mentioned, we do have a new regional communications center. Talk to us about your feelings about regional communications and your approach to becoming integrated with that kind of structure.
Sure. Regionalization communications is a growing trend in this area and I definitely have no problems with that. I think, you know, run right and a coordinated effort to keep a coordinated attack and accountability, I think are a very strong venue. It provides opportunity for an individual dispatcher to know what's going on in the mutual aid communities that we work with hand-in-hand. So there could be a much quicker response for getting a mutual aid company to the town that needs help and I think it's a valuable effort to put the time into and the resources into this type of situation.
Very good. Thank you.
I do have one now.
Go for it.
Because I'm a politician, so I lied. I have one more. So I don't know if you, probably you studied the numbers before beginning this process and Chris alluded to what our budget is for fire and I think round numbers, in the past 10 years, from 2010 to the present, it's been about a 60% increase, right? It's about 6% a year growth in the amount of money that we're paying to the fire department for their budget to then send out to their initiatives, pay staff, et cetera. Now, as long as the economy is great and people can afford, that's great, but if there is a downturn or it becomes unsustainable to have a 6% a year growth, how would you handle that particular eventuality?
Sure. We'd have to look through the budget and go line by line, item by item and understand and evaluate what we could cut and we've been through that process in our town during the economic downturn. We went through that process. We vetted and we offered to cut as much as we could and unfortunately, it didn't work out and which resulted in we eliminated one position to a attrition and we laid off three firefighters and that was probably the, besides some of the calls that I've been on, that was one of the worst, worst times of my career is to lay somebody off. I would not like to ever have to go through that process again, so I think we'd have to really evaluate our budgets and find out what we can, what we can cut and we'd have to look to alternative sources of funding. There's some mechanisms that we could look to, to increase some revenue for us, for the department and, you know, we'd really have to evaluate and go after that as strongly as possible to avoid that horrible situation that I mentioned, so that would be my goal.
I just have one more question. Of course, I keep saying one more, but this is the last one.
Talk slower.
How many full-time firefighters do you have in Walpole?
We're authorized for nine per group right now, so whether it's 36 firefighters, the chief and I, that makes us 38. We're in the process to have two more, so we'll have, we'll have two groups with 10 and two groups with nine, so a little bit bigger, but our Walpole's population is more than twice the size of Norfolk's. It's a busy community, but growth is, growth is making its way out here as well and, you know, that's stuff that we need to keep an eye on as well and evaluate our resources to keep up with the growing demand of the community and, you know, evaluate, do we have sufficient staffing? Do we need to add upon this? Do we need to, are we comfortable with the staffing that we have? It's, it's an evolving target and it's something that we, again, we'd need to keep a constant eye on.
Perfect. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, anything else from your end?
I'm good. Thank you.
Cece from you? Blythe, anything you'd like to add? Very good. Well, in that case, thank you very much, Mr. Berry. We really appreciate your time.
Thank you for coming in. Appreciate you.
Have a good rest of your evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Take care.
I'm just going to type a few more notes and bring our next candidate in. Five-minute break until our next candidate, is that okay with everybody? All right, welcome back. We're going to bring in our second candidate and continue with our interviews. Mr. Haley, how are you doing, sir?
Hi, how you doing?
Kevin Calcutt. Very nice to meet you.
Mr. Calcutt, pleasure.
Hi, I'm Cece.
Hi, Cece, pleasure meeting you.
Chris Weider. Nice to meet you.
Nice to see you again, David. Nice to see you again. Yes. Right, over there.
Please join us right over here.
Pick a brown chair, any chair. Okay.
Thank you very much for spending some time with us this evening. We do appreciate it.
You're welcome. It's an honor.
We do have some questions for you, but we figured we'd give you the first part of your time to just tell us a little bit about yourself.
Okay. First, personally, my name is David Haley, 52 years old. I'm a resident of Foxborough. My wife Heather here is in support as well. Seven children between us, two grandchildren, busy, crazy house, but all in all, good. My experience kind of summed up in a nutshell. I've been with Foxborough Fire for 36-plus years now. I was hired on the call department in 1983, career in 1989, and I've held the current position of senior captain since 2004. I've held numerous positions within the organization, most notably 14 years as our EMS coordinator, where my greatest accomplishment in my mind occurred with the, I spent two years literally all by myself pretty much for the most part, researching, developing and seeing the implementation through of our advanced life support, paramedic-level service. That occurred in 2001. That was a pretty big accomplishment. Again, I've served in positions of training coordinator. I have a vast amount of experience working at Gillette Stadium, a large event, you know, a large venue-type events, sold-out events, so on and so forth. Notably with Gillette Stadium, I was involved in the original drafting of a standard operating guidelines, response plans up there back in 1990. guidelines, response plans up there back in 1990. And pretty much the current structure we use up there is very similar. We have a very active and a very well-run operation for a small-town fire department, if you will. I've had the experience of serving in both positions of the deputy chief-in-chief, both within the department and at Gillette Stadium events. So I've got some pretty good command experience as far as that goes. Some of the more notable things that I think put me in an advantageous position for this opportunity is, number one, I was accredited as a mass fire chief by the Mass Fire Service Commission back in 2016. And that has to be renewed every third, three years with education, experience, training, so on and so forth. I just got that renewed several months ago. I currently possess a master's degree in public administration from Anna Maria College. One of my even more greater accomplishments, I'm a graduate of the National Fire Academy's Executive Fire Officer Program. If you're not familiar with that program, it's kind of the pinnacle of chief officer-level training. It's a four-year program where you go two weeks a year down to the National Fire Academy. Each year, you're required to write an applied research paper, 40 to 70 pages in length on some topic, basically try to solve some issue. And that was a really great achievement. One of the great benefits of that is the networking. I have 50-odd classmates that I still interact with daily where I can pick up the phone, whatever the issue may be, within my department or anywhere else, and somebody out there has seen it, heard it, done it, can offer a solution. I'm also a graduate of the Massachusetts Firefighting Academy and the University of Massachusetts Donahue Institute's Chief Fire Officer Program. So that's another local achievement. I've been a member of the District One Hazards Materials Team for 29 years. I'm a charter member. That team actually covers the town of Norfolk, so I've been over here for several incidents the past number of years. I also serve as the chairman of the State Standard Operating Guideline Committee for the hazmat team. So basically, what we do is the six teams throughout the state, each has a representative to this committee, and we basically write, revise, review all of the standard operating guidelines that govern the daily and hourly operations, if you will, of the hazmat teams within the Commonwealth. I'm also a paramedic and glad to be. I still try to use my skills as much as I can, even though I'm a shift commander in Foxborough currently as a captain. I certainly have no problem jumping in the back of the ambulance and getting hands-on with the guys and girls that I work with. And again, a couple other maybe notable points, just so you understand where my level of commitment comes in. Should I have the opportunity to get this position, my goal is to retire as a Norfolk Fire Chief. In other words, I'm not going anywhere. There are chiefs out there that have a tendency to bounce around looking for bigger and better, more money. I don't know. I'm here to tell you that my opportunity to come here would be one move and one move only. And secondly, another goal of mine would be to make sure that the next fire chief after me comes from within the Norfolk Fire Department. I think that's key, that's essential. And that would involve, that would involve some professional development planning as well, succession planning, put some good things in place. I know the department here in this town has an excellent reputation. It's a great crew. I know most of them personally. We interact almost sometimes on a daily basis with mutual aid, regionalization, if you will. We kind of do it on a small scale in terms of the incidents we respond to. But trying to think of, you know, some of the other things. I'm heavily involved in my department in fire prevention as a shift commander. We recently just kind of had a kind of shift in responsibilities, but for the past several years, I achieved my Fire Prevention Officer II Level Certification, which is kind of a new thing put out by the Mass Fire Academy. And that allows me to go out and do code enforcement, inspections, plan review, issue permits, so on and so forth. So my experience has really brought me forward to this point today where I think I'm ready for an opportunity like this, and I think I'd be a great fit for the town.
Very good. Well, I feel like you just answered a good portion of our questions, so we're going to have to scramble a bit to fill time here.
That's fine.
Chris, go ahead.
How are you?
How am I?
Good. You're coming from a, you know, $3.5 million budget to a $1.6 million budget. You're coming to a town that we originally were going to in the next year or so, either rebuild or renovate, or actually, we're going to renovate a fire station. And here we are sitting today as we can't tell you whether or not we're going to renovate a fire station, leave it alone, or rebuild it. You're also very clear about the fact that the economy may change and that level funding may become necessary on a fire department. How do you sort of, how do you balance all those together? I mean, right now, we're looking at, you know, maybe a new fire station, maybe not. Can you work within the fire station we have if we can't afford to either renovate and build? And how do you, how do you look at the level funding issue in a town like Norfolk where our budget is much less than what you've dealt with? How do you move forward from there?
First and foremost, I've lived through level-funded budgets back when times were tough not too long ago in Foxborough where, you know, we made, we had to make do with less to a large degree. And again, it affected staffing levels, it affected our ability to get acquisitions, whether it was, you know, new fire apparatus or equipment, personal protective equipment, so on and so forth. So certainly, it's something I've lived through, and I don't look at it as an impediment to the job. I look at it as a challenge. As far as financing, you know, there are more creative ways today to find and discover financing in the fire service, whether it be through grants, donations, a good examination of the ambulance billing practices. I know that's something we did in Foxborough, and we did it very successfully. Our return rate is exceptional. We get some other benefits from the current company that we use in terms of providing training to the personnel and staff that's required. As far as the new facility goes, and I know Blythe and I had discussed this as well, it's basically, I look at it as an opportunity to basically start at square one. And that would involve, you know, forming a committee of the relevant stakeholders, whether it be appointed elected officials, citizens at large, building officials. And obviously, the fire department, all I, you know, one comment I made to Blythe is I would, I would just want a seat at the table. And I say seat, I said, not so much for myself, but for the fire department to be represented. As far as the facility goes, I think the communities around us have all experienced some type of renovation or new building. I think there's a wealth of information out there we could go out and get from certain departments, you know, what went right, what went wrong, financing issues, you know, areas we could maybe make cuts in or other areas we can improve upon, and basically come up with a cohesive plan to move forward. Does that mean, you know, a brand-new building outright? I mean, I think that would be everyone's ultimate goal, but, you know, after looking at all the alternatives, whether it's renovation, addition, remodel, essentially, it's going to be up to the voters to decide, you know, what they're willing to accept. But certainly, I'm open to any and all opportunity to explore all those possibilities and all those alternatives, including the funding aspect. You know, is it something where we set aside some of the ambulance money every year to go towards a new facility via, you know, do we look at bonding part of the expense? I mean, but certainly, I look at it as a challenge that I think we could be very successful at. In Foxborough, we've been on, I can still call it our new building. We've been in it 12 years now, and it still looks like new to me. And we treat it well, it's well-cared for. But I can tell you, we went through different iterations of buildings, designs, remodels, locations for over 20 years. So it's something that I'm certainly not new to. I think part of the reality is, I know there are concerns about the economy coming up in the future. And again, you know, we're just going to have to do the best with what we have. And like I said, I certainly look at it as a challenge to provide the men and women of the Norfolk Fire Department, you know, the best suitable work environment and safe work environment that we could possibly provide, especially one that the appointed elected officials and the taxpayers in Norfolk are willing to pay for.
Another question I asked the other applicant is, obviously, one of the challenges today seems to be in Norfolk especially has been is that retaining younger firefighters. Unlike yourself, where you grew up in the town, probably could, had the wherewithal to purchase a home early on, today, the younger firefighters coming to Norfolk, the homes are not available, that they can just go out outright and purchase. So it's harder for the younger firefighter to come here, work here, stay here without looking at other opportunities. How do you retain the younger firefighters instead of losing them after the initial training to other communities? What's your, what's your sort of game plan for something like that?
Are you asking on the career level or the...
On the career level.
Career level. I think a large part, and I've talked to some of the individuals that have moved on to other locations, I think a large part of their decision, first and foremost, was the facility, and probably singularly, the facility. And again, I think, I think if we worked collectively to put together a plan to, like I said before, remodel, renovate, build brand-new, you certainly provide the employees a comfortable, safe, suitable, efficient work environment, they're less apt to go to maybe a community that has a brand-new facility, you know, such as Plainville or some of the others that were just built. I think Norfolk, I think the daily operations of the department are excellent. And again, the department has a great reputation in the area from our, at least from my department, from our neighboring department, as well as others that I've spoken with. So the caliber and the quality of the personnel you have is second to none, in my opinion. And again, it's, maybe it's the work environment that's the issue. But again, you know, maybe we have to talk to those that have left and try to find out, you know, why did you leave? You know, you were a good employee, we valued you, we wanted to keep you. You left for obvious reasons, you know, maybe it was career opportunities, advancement opportunities. But I guess what I'm saying is, we can't really kind of attack that issue until we know maybe what the underlying problems are.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
You're good. It's easy.
All right. So I guess my first question would be, I understand from your background that you also, you were a call firefighter for...
Yes.
...before you became a career firefighter. What are your thoughts on call or volunteer firefighters to supplement the resources of the department? Pros and cons?
I'm extremely supportive of the call department. I mean, I wouldn't have, I would not have had the opportunity of the career I've had without being on the call department, at least in the community I was at. Foxborough, we had a very successful run with the career and call department, working together. Commonly referred to as a combination department, but we were always treated as one department. You know, the career guys knew their place, the call guys knew their place, but so on and so forth. At an incident scene, we all worked together, we're all there to do the same job. Most of our hires, especially the higher echelon of our department members, were call men as well. Currently, today, we have what's called an explorer post, which is similar to a call force, and we've hired several of those members coming up through. I'm extremely supportive of the call department. I think for a community the size of Norfolk, certainly, the budget does not present itself to allow the department to be an all-career department, at least at this state. That's kind of a given. So the issues with the call, having a call department is twofold. Number one, recruitment, and number two, retention. So recruitment, how do we get good people? How do we get people to join? And again, it's an issue where we have to look at, what are we, what are we offering them to come to us? You know, is it, you know, there are several different methods out there that departments use in terms of recruiting potential candidates to be call firefighters, whether it's, you know, a stipend of pay or an hourly pay, whether it's, you know, callback pay or whatnot. Some, I know some communities offer tax breaks, you know, to the call firefighters. So that's 50% of the issue there. The other 50% is retention. How do we keep them? You know, call firefighters today, the departments and the communities make usually, traditionally anyway, make a pretty good investment in these people in terms of equipping them with gear, training, medical physicals, whatever's needed to get them, quote-unquote, "up and running." And so how do we keep, you know, people like that? I use Plainville as a great example, and I, many, many friends over there, they have a very robust call department. They train constantly, consistently, and their call guys often leave to go get full-time jobs somewhere else. But whatever formula they're using, it just seems to work for them. So one of the other things that I mentioned, and I've talked with Blythe about, is I'm currently also a member of the International Association of Fire Chiefs, and they have a very huge division dedicated to the recruitment and retention of call firefighters. So in other words, whatever the issues are and whatever solutions are out there, there are many organizations we can reach out to and get help and guidance and, again, try to, try to move forward. But I see the call force in Norfolk not going anywhere and being a very key, important part of the department and its overall daily operation.
Thank you. A second question that I have has to do with what initiatives or what examples from other departments statewide, if any, could you point to, or what ideas would you have to address the important issue of diversity and inclusion within the department?
That's a good question.
Thank you.
And again...
I wrote it down.
You know, I'm all in for diversity, inclusion. I mean, I always have, that's how I was raised. And again, I would probably reach out to some of the more knowledgeable national organizations that have diversity and programs in terms of, again, you know, recruiting those individuals, training them, retaining them, so on and so forth. So again, it's, you know, one of the things I, that I, I think one of my strong suits, if you will, is that for a situation like that or an example like that, you know, I may not have the answer off the top of my head, but I sure know where to go get it.
Right. That's a great answer.
And again, I could, you know, 50-odd classmates, you know, throughout the country from the National Fire Academy, I'm sure one of them at one point has, has had to deal with this issue and can offer ideas, solutions, you know, pitfalls, everything.
Great, thank you. And finally, what outside programs would you like to see implemented, if any, to get the community more involved in, because I understand, by the way, I know that Foxborough's not, so this is a question for everybody, but it's a little bit of a layup for Foxborough. What outside, to get the outside or community involvement within the department, what types of things would you like to see implemented to be, for the community to feel more connected to the department?
I'm a big proponent of being out in the community and getting exposure for the men and women of the Norfolk Fire Department out there. Because let's face it, at the end of the day, when it comes time for funding or, you know, requests, you know, if the taxpayers and the people aren't behind us, then we're not going to go anywhere. That being said, some of the more creative things out there, actually, one of the papers I wrote for the National Fire Academy was on fire safety and fall prevention education for the elderly. You know, the baby boomers is the fastest-growing segment of our population right now, and to a point where they're going to put much more of a need or a burden, if you will, on our, on our community services. And one of the things that is being pushed at the national level extensively is to get out there and get more involved with the elderly in terms of, like I said, fire safety and fall prevention. We've done a great job with the kids over the years, and that certainly has to continue. Statistics are out there to show that, you know, that's made a significant impact in fire safety as far as the education we do with children. But anything we could do to get exposure out in the community, whether it's, I know they have, they have a 5K race coming up for autism, I think it's this weekend, you know, any type of activity that would involve the community, get the community more involved. And again, one of the, one of the biggest things that I've learned over tenure of my career is, you know, like I mentioned about going to town meeting and, you know, say you're trying to acquire something, you know, if you haven't gone out and educated the public about what you need, why you need it, and why they should spend the money on it, and just as an example, then, you know, you're kind of doomed yourself from the get-go. So any opportunity that I see that we can get out as a department into the public, whether it's, you know, like I said, whether it's the elderly, the children, handicapped, different segments of the population that have different needs, you know, I'm all for it.
Thank you.
Just a few questions from my end. First, could you talk to us for a quick moment about your experience and your approach to developing and managing a department budget?
Developing and managing a department budget? My experience with developing and managing a department budget started back with the, our Advanced Life Support Program. I, again, I had taken a two-week class at the National Fire Academy on management of EMS and came back, and I went to my chief and said, you know, we need to go to paramedic level, we need to look at it. And back in those days, it was, we used a hospital-based paramedic truck out of Norwood and then Southwood Hospital at the time. And it didn't seem to be a very feasible idea, but as I looked into the, did the research and looked into the development of it, you know, we figured out a way where we could do it and fund it, essentially with ambulance revenue. So I had to develop a budget with, you know, personnel costs, including overtime, equipment costs, startup costs, cost of ambulances and replacement ambulances, and present that. It was a multi-year plan, I had to present that to our board of selectmen, who blessed it, and we were off and running. Then, as the EMS coordinator, I had to manage that budget on a yearly basis. Is it as involved as the department budget overall? No. But it did, it did provide me the opportunity over my career with several chiefs to have input in the, in the department budget and the budgeting process. input in the department budget and the budgeting process. He would always, several chiefs would always put out a memo every year, "Hey, budget time, any identified needs, let me know, put it in writing," so on and so forth. And we would go over the budget, the officers and the administrators, the chief and deputy, literally with a fine-tooth comb, line item for line item. So, you know, we had the salary budget, which was kind of spelled out in terms of contract obligations and whatnot, and then the expense budget, which was the, you know, kind of the bread and butter of, you know, toilet paper and, you know, personal protective gear, you know, right down the line. So, I had involvement in that for many, many years, in terms of developing not only our yearly operating budget, but also our capital outlay budget, which was larger purchases, and then the capital improvement plan, which is the much more expensive, usually one-time purchases.
Very good, thank you. Next, could you talk to us for a brief moment about your approach and your perspective on mutual aid?
Approach and perspective on mutual aid? If it wasn't for mutual aid, I don't think any of us would be working in the fire service right now. We have a more heavily developed dependency on mutual aid today than I think we ever have. And that's due to a number of different factors, but I'm very supportive of mutual aid. I think to build relationships with the neighboring communities is only going to be a positive. Overall, it's going to make our operations more efficient. We use, you know, mutual aid in Foxborough daily, whether we go somewhere or they come to us. Primarily TMS, but, you know, on occasion, there are the fire calls that we, again, we go up to and they come to us on. It's, you know, I kind of call it regionalization at its best right now, because if you talk regionalization in some parts of this Commonwealth, you kind of get a chagrin, you know, look back at you. I said, "But other places do." We really, there's many things we do that mimic regionalization now, even though we are our own little fire departments, if you will. The hazmat team, you know, it's a good example of regionalization, you know? The District One Team, we cover 98 cities and towns, 45 members from all over Norfolk, Bristol, Plymouth, Barnstable County, and we have, we handle calls almost daily. So, I'm a big fan of mutual aid. Again, I don't think none of us, the smaller towns, would be able to exist if we weren't able to back up and support each other.
Well, it's beyond me to pass up a great segue. So my next question is related to regional communications. As you know, we have the recent center that was put in. Talk to us about your perspective in that regard.
We just went to it in Foxborough as well, and I was totally supportive of it, and I am today. Of course, you know, I was a little nervous, because you kind of lose what I term the personal touch, if you will, you know, where you'd walk into our Public Safety Building in Foxborough and somebody would meet you at the window. Well, now, the only one that meets you at the window was a police officer sitting behind a piece of glass. So the dispatchers are in the communication center and they're doing their thing, but I can tell you, it has, I've always, I'll give you another tidbit of experience, you know, when we moved into our Public Safety Building, we were asked if we wanted to dispatch, you know, on a fill-in overtime basis. And my organization, we unanimously took a vote and said no. And I'll tell you why. Dispatch is a separate profession in itself, and there's no business, there's no reason that you have to put a firefighter on the desk, dispatch, and when, you know, like I said, the dispatchers are a separate profession in itself, you know, they go through their own training, they have their own style of person. And I think what we've put together in Foxborough, and I know what you guys have over here, to me, I think is great. I think it's made the, again, the job much more professional. I think the dispatchers are far better trained, accountable, and it's done, it's, you know, regionalization in terms of dispatch, and it's done all across the country, and has been for many, many years. So, again, one of those things that's kind of new to New England, if you will, at least this part, and at least my experience so far has been excellent.
Very good. Thank you very much. Anything you'd like to add? CC?
No.
Blythe, anything you'd like to add? Well, in that case, thank you so much for stopping and talking to us this evening, we really do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, once again, we're tracking five minutes ahead, so, everybody okay with taking a little break, or you want to just push through?
I don't care.
It's fine. Either way.
Just push through?
Yeah.
All right, so Blythe, we'll just push through.
Okay.
Mr. Kenny, how are you, sir?
Very well.
Very well, thank you. Kevin Calcutt.
Very nice to meet you.
Chris Reader, nice to meet you.
Hi, I'm CC.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to see you guys.
You have a C road over here and join us. And as soon as I get the feeling back in my hand, we'll start our questions.
(laughing)
Lord.
You've got to work on that.
I know, right?
Get like those little things.
Something.
Push-ups for your hands.
Well, thank you so much for joining us tonight, we do really appreciate your time. We look forward to asking you some questions, but to get started, please, share a little bit about yourself and your experience.
All right. Well, I'm Aaron Kenny, I currently serve as a fire chief in Sherburne, Mass. A little bit about my experience is probably a little unorthodox in terms of the experience I've been able to have and what my previous career was. So, I started off in the fire service young. I started, going back to when I was 13, I started as a cadet with Hanover County Fire and EMS in Virginia, where I grew up. And my passion for it's never gone away. So, I've found a way to be involved all the way through high school, college. In college, I worked with Gainesville Fire Rescue, and also with Archer Fire Rescue, just trying to learn as much as I could and to stay active and be involved in the service. And, you know, even through my NFL career, fortunately, I was able to play in NFL for eight years, but even during that time, I continued to train, take classes, and during the offseason, I would go to around the country, you know, use the platform of being an NFL player. Sometimes, for some reason, people want you to come hang out with them. I use it to go train and to learn more, and learn different ways, different regions in the country, you know, provided services, and picked up different skills, and just, you know, tried to learn as much as I could about the service, and then stayed active as a firefighter in Williamson County, Tennessee, throughout my NFL career. And then, within a year when I retired, I was, my first full-time job, I was a training officer and captain with Gallatin Fire in Tennessee. My career just kind of exploded and took off from there. So, for me, I'm either fortunate or cursed. I've been able to have or hold literally every rank in the fire department, with the exception of fire marshal. I've been a deputy chief, I've been a firefighter, driver operator, captain, and, you know, for me, at this point, it's been fortunate, I've been able to have a diverse range of experiences, and been, you know, have served under some great leaders, I've served under some that maybe weren't so great. But I tried to use every experience and every encounter as a learning experience and a way to grow me as a leader and to, you know, prepare me for opportunities like this. Always looked at, I never wanted to be in a position where I said I was waiting for an opportunity, I always wanted to be in a position where I said I was preparing for and learning, so I'd be ready for an opportunity. So, I didn't sit on my hands very often, or if at all. I had to learn how to say no, sometimes, to different training opportunities and classes. But, you know, I've learned, I've matured, definitely, and, you know, definitely excited about, you know, potentially having this opportunity.
Very good, thank you. So, I'll start with a question, is that's quite all right? The first one I have for you is, if you could just talk to us a little bit about your experience and your approach to developing and managing a department budget?
Developing and managing budget? I do a lot of budget preparation and just assessment to kind of see, or not kind of see, but to really understand what the needs are. I definitely try to address the needs of the internal stakeholders, but I really try to get input from external stakeholders too, as well as town leadership, and obviously be working hand-in-hand with Blythe, to try to make sure that we, you know, put together a budget that is, meets the needs of the department, but also is fiscally responsible. So, you know, I like to pride myself on saying I could stretch nickel's transparently thin, but, you know, I've been fairly successful in my career as a fire chief, or as a deputy fire chief, working on budgets and, you know, working through major projects, and, you know, I think, you know, one of the big things is being able to justify what it is that you need, you know, and not come to the table with frivolous things, or things that are not necessarily a need, but a, you know, maybe a want. You try to trim those, especially, you know, every since I've been in the position to be a budget maker, someone has an impact or influence in the budget, you know, I've learned that, you know, there's not a lot of money going around. You know, sometimes, as a firefighter, or when I was a firefighter, you know, you always heard that, "Well, they've got the money, they just won't..." And then, when you get another side of the coin, and you're wearing the white hat, you realize, "Ah, no, they don't." And, you know, you've really got to make sure you justify the needs, you know, to work through that. I really like to track closely the budget. In my first experience as a fire chief, you know, I was able to catch an error that the finance director for town made, in particular with my budget, because they had put a freeze on me, saying I didn't have revenue left, and that we were going to come up short, and I was going to have to, you know, people weren't going to be able to work or get paychecks. I'm like, "Whoa, hold on, that's not accurate," you know? So I like to try to be very attentive and pay attention to detail when it comes to that. You know, I know that it's important, you know, I'm a taxpayer, I know how important it is for taxpayers, for their revenue to be used responsibly, and the financial, you know, resources to be used responsibly. So, that's an important part of what we do, and, you know, it's something I take pride in being able to do and do successfully.
Very good, thank you. My next question is, if you could talk to us for a moment about your approach and perspective on mutual aid?
Well, mutual aid, I mean, in this day and age, you can't survive without it. I think it's absolute, it's absolutely necessary. I think it'd be foolish to try to say, you know, as a town, we're going to go at this, you know, and pound our fists and beat our chests and say, "We got it by ourselves." It's unrealistic and unsustainable as well, so, and it would be astronomically expensive. So, it wouldn't be a responsible use of resources. So, you know, one of the things that I really have enjoyed about coming up here, and that parallels my experience in South Carolina, is the use of mutual aid and, you know, the use of having resources coming in, not waiting, but, you know, on the initial assignment, on initial arms, having the resources come in so that you can make an impact, you know, when you get to the scene and have the resources you need when you first arrive, as opposed to waiting or creating delays. So, mutual aid is, I think, critically important. I really like the Regional Dispatch Center, you know, I think that's a very wise decision and a good thing. I think it creates better situational awareness for the departments that are participating, you know, and creates a stronger link of communication, which helps us all, you know? So, I think mutual aid is critically important to effective service delivery.
Very good, thank you. Finally, from me, Sherburne has a slightly different structure to Norfolk in terms of its fire department. Talk to us about the difference between the two, and then how you'd scale your experience to be effective in this environment.
You know, well, the big difference is primarily, up until October of last year, I was the only full-time employee. I was able to work with my staff, and we got a SAFER grant, we hired a daytime captain full-time, and this year, you know, working through the budget and examining numbers, I was able to get our executive assistant, or department administrator, up to full-time as well. So, but, other than that, we're the three that are full-time. Everything else is on-call and per diem. So, you know, obviously, it's the most sustainable model of service delivery for Sherburne, and what the financial picture looks like there. It can be challenging at times, it can be really stressful, because there are days, or there have been days, where you have limited resources in terms of people, and you may not have certain slots filled, especially on the ambulance, you know? So, you know, I have to be a working chief, my full-time staff, we always fill gaps, I mean, that's what we have to do to, you know, to sustain and make sure that we're providing the service that our town is expecting. And I have no problem with it, I think that's just part of it. I think even in a town like here, you know, you have full-time staff, but it, you know, there are days where it's going to be stretched to the max, and they're not going to be able to respond or take care of every single response. We're going to have to rely on mutual aid, we're going to have to have, you know, me as a chief, or other chief officers have to be working chiefs and willing to get their hands dirty, and, you know, be a part of the, be a part of the solution, and respond to calls and do what we have to do to make sure that service is provided. So, I think the one thing that'll be different, and for me, that I would look forward to, is a little less stressful, knowing that you do have, you know, at least a staff of three to four people that are there 24/7. You know, there's been a few times, particularly holidays and, you know, in those summer months where people are, you know, going to the Cape, going on vacations, sometimes you hear crickets when you're putting out, you know, requests for people to cover, or to, you know, to be on the ambulance, or times when you get a fire alarm, or a vehicle fire, or anything like that, and you get four, three or four people maybe, as opposed to, you know, having that three or four there with you already, plus the potential for your call staff. I think the combination system is very effective. I think it's one where you have a call staff to supplement, the career staff is very effective, and a fiscally responsible model that works well. That is the model that I came from in Tennessee. I had 18 full-timers, and then a staff of 30 volunteer or on-call people, and that's the way we built the department. And it continues to function that way now, and, you know, is thriving. So, I think the blueprint and the foundation that I laid for Mount Juliet, that city, and with the department, has been one that is sustainable, and one that is allowing the department to thrive and to grow, and to meet the needs of the community, which actually is a little bit bigger than here, it's about, that population's about 30,000, right as a suburb of Nashville. So, you know, we were able to staff three stations using that model, and, you know, never, you know, fortunately, in my time there, and then even, you know, I'm still friends with, you know, some of the members there, they haven't had any issues with coverage or having enough people, or missing a call or anything. So, I think, you know, bringing that kind of experience and knowledge to the table in a system that's already set up that way, you know, I think we can maybe enhance the call membership, and make sure there's a big backbone of support there for the career staff. I know as the call volume increases, and as, you know, demands increase on a department, that stretches those human resources really thin, you know, they get worked really hard, and, you know, putting a lot of man-hours in. But, you know, from what I've seen, and what research I've done, this department has a great reputation. The personnel are passionate about what they do, and they're willing to make the sacrifices and to make themselves available, and to be present, to train, to respond. So, I think that's, you know, a great foundation to start from and to work with.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Chris?
Great, thanks. I know you're a Lieutenant Pento of the Police Department very well, he has high regard for you. You know, I looked through your resume, and I think you're correct, you're very unorthodox, your career.
Yes.
And admirable, I mean, it really is. So I said, "What's my biggest fear?" My biggest fear is this is a stepping stone. And so, tell me, how do I, how do I look at you and say, "He's not going to disappear in five years or three years," because he is a high flyer, he is good at what he does, he's got all the ambition, the brains and the motivation to keep moving, and nothing wrong with that? But what should we be looking for? Is this a, and it may be an unfair question, but I think it's valid, is, where do I see you in three to five years?
I don't think it's, you know, unfair question. I think, you know, that was one of my reservations, even when I initially applied, because my wife and I made the decision to relocate here, her family's from, well, she grew up in Cambridge, we have families scattered all over New England, and, you know, we made a conscious decision to make this move, and I knew that, you know, making the move, you know, this was a big commitment. And for me, I was, I wanted to find a destination job here, somewhere where I could settle in and just, just commit my time, energy, and effort, and passion, and, you know, work long-term. And I think, I think this is, this is the kind of, the kind of place and kind of the fit that I've been looking for. I was able, when I met with Blythe, I was able to share with her that, you know, there was a stretch after my NFL career where I dealt with some things personally in terms of, you know, I don't want to sound cliche, but like, you know, I've had a lot of concussions, so I had some depression, I had some issues that I had never encountered in my life before, and being the big NFL firefighter player, I was like, "I can take this, I'll, you know, I'll just duck my head and grind through it," and that wasn't working. long-term. And I think, I think this is, this is the kind of, the kind of place and kind of the fit that I, that I've been looking for. I was able, when I, when I met with Blythe, I was able to share with her that, you know, there was a stretch after my NFL career where I dealt with some things personally in terms of, you know, I don't want to sound cliche, but like, you know, I've, I've had a lot of concussions. So I had some depression. I had some issues that I had never encountered in my life before. And being the big NFL firefighter player, I was like, I can take this. I'll, you know, I'll, I'll just duck my head and grind through it and that wasn't working. And I think that contributed to my, you know, being in, in a job and, you know, allowing some of the external circumstances to influence what I was doing or how I was doing things. And now, you know, I've grown up. I matured a lot. You know, I think fortunately for me, but at the same time, when my first, you know, fire, career fire service jobs, like being a fire officer, being my first chief job, I was really young. You know, there were some things that I didn't understand and didn't know that I do now, which makes me better prepared to be in a place like this long-term. And it is, it's a destination thing. We're rooted here now. You know, I've got my kids in Rivers and they're in high school. There's no way I'm taking them out of there or moving them. You know, so we're, we're rooted and, you know, the other thing that is, my, my career goal and dream was to be a fire chief in a small town. I didn't, I don't want to be and never have desire to be a chief in a big city or a bigger town. This is kind of, this is kind of like the, what would be the end goal. It's a, it's a career department, a combination department where I'll get to intimately know all my personnel. I'm not just a political figurehead, you know, in a big city where, you know, there's no way the boss and commissioner could know every single one of his firefighters on an intimate level, even if he tried. There's so many employees and so many people. So I never had an aspiration to be a chief of a large municipality. I think this fits what my life goal is and what my career goal is, is, you know, to be in a department with a good reputation, to maintain that and work upon that and to make this a destination place. And I, you know, all of the pieces right now are fitting. It's, it feels like it's going to be a good fit. I really had a, a good, good hour with, with, with Ms. Blythe about, you know, just talking about how she runs things, how we could work together. I felt really comfortable and really good about, you know, potentially working with her. And I think that's an important piece where in previous opportunities, I never, that's something I wasn't mature enough to look at, you know. I, I didn't think to look at, well, who are you going to be working for? Who are you going to answer to? Is that somebody you can partner with and lock arms with and, and, you know, go do what you need to do and really enjoy every day going to work? So, you know, I think that part, being able to have the opportunity to sit with her, it's the first time in my experience where a town administrator's done that was, was very good. And, you know, for me, this would, this is my goal or this is like the fruition or the, the end of a goal. Like I have it written down. I wrote my life goes down back in like 2008, 2009. And it didn't say Town of Norfolk Fire Chief, but it said be a, be a fire chief in a small town.
That would be weird.
Yeah, I'd be real surprised if I could have done that. But, no, it, you know, it, this is, this is the kind of place I want to be and want to be long-term. I'm not looking for something bigger. And I think the pieces fit, you know. And I, you know, just being totally candid and honest, like, one of the things that fits is, it's a good fit from the standpoint of, I feel like I'm, I can work. If I've met some of the personnel, I feel like, you know, I can definitely see the great potential that the department has. And then the other piece is, you know, financially, it works for my family. And that's a, that's a big component. That's something I didn't necessarily look at before either. I had a lot more financial freedom when I first retired from NFL, but having four kids, family of six, your nest egg dwindles away quick.
Oh, really?
You know, the, the financial piece is one that, that is, that was important as well. And I think, you know, the, the financial resources and what is, you know, how you are compensated here for this position would be something that is a better fit for my family. So, and a really near perfect fit for my family. So, you know, we, my wife and I've looked at everything and, and kind of been throwing it around and looking back and forth and, and excited about, you know, the opportunity.
I know, you know, we have a fire station that was going to be renovated.
Yes.
May not be renovated, may be rebuilt, we don't know. It's got to go to the voters at some point in the near future.
Yes.
How do you look at that? I know Sherburne, you're coming, most of the other applicants came from newer stations. You're coming from an older station and a smaller budget. So how do you look at that as far as our station?
You know, we have similar challenge there where, you know, we've, we've kind of outgrown our walls a little bit, but, you know, we make it work. And that's what firefighters do. That's what, that's what first responders do. You, you kind of have that adapt and overcome mentality. So, you know, obviously we want to work towards fixing it. Just similar in Sherburne, the past two years, we made, you know, we did some renovation, fixed the bay doors, raised the bay doors so apparatus could all fit in the central station, which couldn't before I got there. And we took chunks in cap, small capital projects. We'll be finishing the outside, the exterior renovation of the main station there this year. But, you know, we resided, got new doors. We redid the apparatus floor to make it safer and make it, you know, more, we put a non-slip, you know, or slip-resistant surface down, you know, put an exhaust fin in there, things like that to try to enhance and make it better. And I think, you know, you do, you do the most you can at the maximum you can with the resources you're given. Obviously, you know, I've walked through and toured the facility. You know, there, obviously there's a need, a pretty significant need there to, you know, it's, it's close to completely outgrown. But I think, you know, we can get there. I think it's something that, you know, you, we, you work together and you put, put the case together to the voters to see, you know, what is palpable, what they can, what they can digest and, and then use whatever that is to, to the best of our ability and, and make the most of what we get. I think there's potential for renovation. There's potential to, I think, maybe use part of the building that's there. I do think as far as apparatus space and, and storage areas, things like that, there's definitely a need for growth. Again, the personnel of adapt and overcome, they've done a great job at figuring out where and how they can, you know, put in place things. But I think there's not much ingenuity left to be able to create, you know, spaces where there aren't spaces or put, put things where there aren't, there isn't a place to put it. So, you know, it is a need. It's obviously a, a big need and it'd be something that would be a hot, you know, something I would look to, you know, try to work on to, to try to get a better or more suitable facility sooner rather than later.
Thank you. Thank you.
It's over to me. So I had this really great call volunteer firefighter question and then you went ahead and answered it beautifully before I got to it. So I just want credit for the fact that I had a great question, but I no longer need to ask it. My building question also was asked and answered, but I have a couple. So one of them is, obviously you're coming from, all three candidates were coming from outside of the Town of Norfolk's Fire Department. What do you think the sort of the challenges to, to coming into and integrating a new, into a new culture would be? And what are the benefits for that potential experience, in your opinion?
I think, you know, one of the, well, obviously, the obvious challenges are is that you're an outsider coming in and there are established traditions. There's an established culture. And in the fire service, tradition is a great thing, but it's also a horrible thing because sometimes we have, our progress is impeded by tradition. You know, our ability to embrace change sometimes is, is limited by tradition. You know, but there are traditions that should be honored. So I think coming in, that's going to, that's always a challenge because, you know, I have experiences from other places. I've seen best practices and ways that other departments or experienced ways, other regions may provide service or may choose to do, you know, perform service delivery that, that I may think are more efficient or more effective. And, you know, at some point, I'm sure that there'll be a butting of heads. And, I mean, that's, that's okay and that's to be expected. I think in, in my experience, what I've learned is, it's better to have buy-in and to have your personnel have a seat at the table and speak into processes, you know, speak into things so that when change does happen, because it's inevitable, we have to change. We have to adapt or else, you know, we get blown by and we aren't able to keep up and provide the services that are needed. So, you know, with that being said, you know, making sure that, you know, the personnel have a seat at the table. And, you know, I learned early on by making mistakes, my first career fire service job, that you can't come in saying, well, this is the way you should do it because it's better. And you can explain to your blue in the face why it's better. You can bring scientific proof and everything else. It does not matter. If they don't get to speak into the process and you don't pragmatically go about it, you're not going to have any success. So for me, I think that's an important piece, you know, building relationships and to break that wall down to be able to, not that it's a bad thing, but to be able to, you know, infiltrate or become part of the culture, but influence the culture in a positive way and maybe make changes where there need to be, you know. And it could be that there's not a need for a ton of change, you know. I know the department has a very good reputation. I've looked at some of the SOPs and SOGs. There's not anything that's like glaring that says, oh my God, I got to come in here and fix this or change it. Like you, you have a very good department. And what I would like to do is keep that going and if anything, you know, put my lead foot on the gas and, and keep it being progressive and keep it going forward and, you know, trying to build it and be even better than, than what it is. So, you know, I think there's a lot of potential there. You've got a great pool of talent. So again, you know, for me, I think, you know, infiltrating a, a new culture and, and, and people get set in their ways of the way they do things and things like that. And sometimes a positive to be an outsider is I've got a different perspective. And for me, what's really unique is I've got a lot of different perspectives because I've, I've worked in different places and different regions and seen, you know, some ways that are better than others and some ways that are more effective than others to provide services or, or even with strategy and tactics. You know, my mindset may be a little different than what they're used to. But that's something that is, you know, that, that's part of growth and part of being progressive is embracing those ideas because I'm going to learn from them probably 100 times more than they're going to learn from me. I think I have a lot to bring to the table, but there's a lot of them who have a lot of years' experience and they're going to teach me things. And I'm definitely going to share everything that I've been exposed to to help make this place better.
Thank you. So just two more and that I had asked the other folks as well. And so the first of those two is that, you know, for, for our town, for me, for everybody, one of the important values is that of diversity and inclusion. And so my question to everyone has been, what do you see as your role or what has, have you seen and experienced as successful ways of, of bringing inclusion into the department?
You know, I think it's critical and I think the chief has to be an ambassador for it. And I think for me, it would be my job to seek it out, to seek out bringing in, you know, diverse, a diverse cadre of candidates, you know, when and if we do hire or advertising the call department to bring in, you know, people that don't necessarily look like me and you and people that may not speak exactly the same language, like, you know, to bring all of that into the table. Because my goal would be for the department to reflect what the community looks like. So, you know, there's, there's a good little mix of people. You know, it's a fairly diverse community and you want, I would want the department to be that way. And, you know, obviously, you know, for, for me, I've, I've had those experiences where I've, I've been the only African-American ever to be in a department coming from the south. And I, you know, that's eye-opening, but I think sad, you know. So the same thing, I've been on a department, there's only been one or two female members, never been a female officer. And I think, again, that, that's sad. So I would, I would want this to be a place where we would continue to, to be inclusive. You know, I've taken some classes from the NFA to specifically about that. And it can be challenging because you only have so big a pool to pull from, you know.
That's right. That's right.
It can be very challenging. So, you know, I think targeting potentially college students or targeting people who are in the community already who have affinity for, for doing this or helping people would be important. You know, the one thing that I did like, you know, visiting and learning about the department, there are some, there's, there, I know there's some female firefighters and EMS coordinators are female. It seems like she does a great job, very, very professional. So I'd like to, you know, draw more of that, you know, and, and bring, bring a little more flavor in there, you know. And that would be a goal of mine.
Thank you. So which kind of dovetails with my last question, which is, I know you mentioned, speaking of college students and, and people becoming interested in firefighting. And you mentioned that you were 13, so quite young. What kinds of things could you see would, or would you like, if at, if any, to implement to sort of reach out to the community or to young people to get them more, to feel more involved or more connected with the department? Certainly I understand that maybe that's not necessary from day to day, right? You saved my life. I'm connected with the fire department. But if, if then three weeks later, fire department is coming looking for help with loans for fire depart, fire stations and stuff, that maybe they're going to want to feel connected. So what kind of things could you see might be fun to implement?
I, I think things that I, things that are already, I think, I think are already done, like the, the open house and things like that are important, but also adding more community outreach and allowing, what I really would like to do and what I've always trying to do, tried to do in the fire station is, and the fire department is, is it, that building and the fire department belongs to the citizens, right? I'm just responsible for it. If I'm, if I'm the fire chief, I'm responsible for it and my personnel are responsible for taking care of it. But really that building belongs to them. Now, that doesn't mean that just willingly the doors are always open. You can come in, do what you want, whenever you want. But it doesn't mean that, you know, the expectation should be that citizens can walk in and ask questions. Citizens can bring their children in and, and get a tour. And then every interaction that, you know, one of the things that I try to foster in my personnel is every interaction you have with the community, have it be a learning experience, not only for you as a firefighter, but also for the citizens. Be prepared to answer questions about service delivery, about if there's a big project we've got, come and be educated about it. So you know and you can speak with, with, with some level of, of knowledge and intelligence about what is happening and what's going on and inform them. Because the bottom line, people like to understand what's going on and be informed. And I think, you know, one of the big things is just making sure that we provide that type of environment where people feel like, hey, I can, if I see a fire truck on the side of the street and somebody's out doing inspection, I, you know, they're not going to get blown off, you know, by the crew. They're going to take a minute to answer their questions, take a minute to, to educate them on whatever it is that they're having questions about. You know, I think doing the safe program obviously is a great way for outreach because you're in the schools. You get to work with the seniors. I think one of the things that sometimes is challenging is, is working with, you know, parents and families, you know. You know, you're, you're, you're working families. Sometimes it's hard to, to get the parents of the kids in or to get, you know, it's easier working with seniors because, you know, you're going to work with the council age, you're going to work with the board of health, you're going to be able, and they usually have a pre-year schedule. Kids, you, you get to go into the schools and meet them where they are. You know, we don't necessarily get to go into every job, you know, place and, and, and talk to families. And I don't get to go, you know, maybe to the law office or whatever it is next door and go sit down and, and talk shop about the fire department or answer questions you may have. So figuring out ways strategically to, to draw them in. And I think doing open houses, doing things like teaching CPR classes, even doing a citizens' fire academy is, is a means to provide that experience, but also provide the citizens with the, the opportunity to get a taste of what services we provide. And we, you know, the fire department just doesn't become that insurance policy that's in the back of your mind, oh, we got a nice, pretty station and pretty trucks. Hopefully I never need them and I really don't understand what they do. I'd rather you really understand what we do and know that we're a vital part of the infrastructure of the community and, and provide a valuable service. So, you know, and I'd like the community to, to be a part of that and understand that they, this is their department and we're going to be a community-based and community-service-based organization. And, you know, we're going to make time and, and customer service is, is a huge point of emphasis for me. You know, I, I have a tendency at times to, to be, I don't know, that's one thing where I would have a shorter fuse. I don't, I don't like to hear where any of my personnel have been short with or unprofessional with the public because the bottom line, they're, that's really who you're working for. Yeah, you have a boss tantrum too, but at the end of the day, they're the reason that, that I'm here. They'd be the reason that, that they have a job. So, you know, it's important to me that the customer service aspect is, is top-notch. You know, we, we can be, like I said, the fire, fire department's like a big family and behind the scenes, we may have our little quarrels. We may have little episodes of dysfunction. But when we leave out of those four walls, everything better be in tip-top shape and we better deliver the best service possible. And we better be customer service oriented. If that means helping somebody across the street, so be it, you know. But that, that's the important component for me is the customer service component is absolutely critical. And I think that's the way you can draw the community in. When, when people feel like they have a seat, they can come talk and learn and get a taste of what it is that you do and what you provide. And then you have a chance to, you know, to draw in more people and, and get the support you need from the community.
Thanks. Those are my questions.
Right at 6:30. Well, sir.
Good night.
I do believe that's everything we have. Chris, anything else from your end?
Thank you for coming.
Beautiful. Thank you so much for coming. We really appreciate it.
Appreciate you coming in.
Thank you so much. Great to meet you.
Great to meet you.
Thanks. Thanks.
Thanks for meeting.
Lucy, you need a word to jump over the desk.
Hi. I should have done some stretching before. It's a little limbering up. Walked the long way.
All right. Well, those are our three finalists. Two quick notes I want to throw out there. First, there was one common thread I heard in all three of those interviews per se, and that was that everybody had great things to say about our reputation and our department. So, I do want to say a big thank you to everybody who works in our public safety departments. Thank you so much for making this much easier and making our town so attractive to those candidate. Thank you. Number two, they were fantastic candidates. I, I think all of them had great experience, had a lot to offer the town. So, another thank you to our, our search committee. Blythe, thank you so much. Scott Bragdon, thank you so much. Deputy Chief Petrusik, thank you so much. Our, our visiting component, our Foxborough Fire Chief, thank you so much. Just three fantastic options and I look forward to talking through them. So, Blythe, would you like to?
Yes.
Give us your perspective.
Yes. I want to echo what you said. It's, it's always the wish of someone in my role to be able to bring forth excellent candidates. And I'm really pleased that we're able to do that. We have, I think in part, it's because we have a well-thought-of department that people want to be here. That hasn't always been the case in other places, so it's a real, hats off to the community. And for me, it's great to have choices among these three, but, well, I think any one of them could be chief. I think they all bring their own unique backgrounds to this and experiences that are vital. My recommendation for tonight is to appoint Erin Kenny as our fire chief, and it's for a lot of reasons. He, of the three candidates, he's the one who's been a chief. He's, he's walked the walk. He's, he's dealt with the issues. Maybe they're a little different than ours. But I value that and I also value that he's done, been to different places and seen different things. I think it's really critical to have that, that background, especially when you're trying to address some of the issues we're going to be addressing, to have those experiences and be able to draw on that. The fact that he's been the chief of a call, all-call department, you know, I, when I sat down with him in our one-on-one, he said, "There's times when I'm getting in the ambulance, I'm driving out of the station to go to the call and I'm not sure who's coming." So, that's tough. But I think he, I think they all understand that this is, needs to be a combination department, that we don't have endless resources and it will take us time to get there wherever there's going to be for Norfolk. But he's going to be able to hit the ground running with those ideas of how to, how to do it and understanding very much how critical it is to us, a little bit more than maybe other candidates. He's worked in departments that have less than adequate budgets. I think we all do to a certain extent. But another thing that stood out to me in his, in our one-on-one was, my calls went up 12% last year and I had to cut my budget. So, you know, he had to figure that out. And so, I, I think that that's an important background. I think he understands the technology and how important it is to help build the consensus for what we need and, and what's going on. I think that's important. And like you, Chris, that question I had was, is this just a stepping stone to the next place? And in my conversation with him, I felt very strongly that that was not the case, that, you know, Sherborne is a different town and what, how they are funded and staffed is, is not ideal for providing the level of service that I think Sherborne, you know, residents maybe think they have. And I'm, I'm not trying to take anything away from Sherborne, but I think this is a better fit for him and I think it's, it would be a good fit for us. Scott did some reference checks for us. And some of the things that we heard about him were that he works very well with town boards, which I think is important. That's a, we're a board-driven community. And he's got a great command of the fire ground. I'm not sure exactly what that, I haven't commanded such a thing, so.
People are nodding in the back, so I'm like, okay.
Okay. I think that's important. And that I truly believe that this is what he wants to be doing in life. And so, I felt very comfortable. I think at the end of the day, who's the person who's going to fit best in our organization and be able to lead our great group forward and work with the police department and be a part of the MECC and be part of the community. And while it's a tough choice among, I said, good candidates, for me, he is the one that I would recommend, am recommending. So, I'll put that out there.
Can I say something?
Go right ahead.
I think, I, I'm going to echo, I'm sure you're going to hear it echoed thrice, Lee, the fact that you guys got three incredible candidates. They're all highly qualified. I think that any one of them could do the job. And then the next question is, who's the best fit for, for those guys over there and for us as a town? And my sense from a who's got the best leadership style, what felt like the best fit tonight was, was, was Erin.
Okay.
Absolutely. I felt incredibly excited about him as, when he came in and started talking about all of the issues that, that you just touched upon about the combination department and what it must have been like being sort of the only paid employee on all-call fire and, and level funding. And I just, I felt, I'll, I'll, I'll say it, it brings a sigh of relief when you said that was your candidate. I'm like, all right, I know who, okay, okay. So, that's, that's all I have to say.
Chris, your perspective.
Again, three fantastic candidates. Very hard choice. I liked, I liked Mr. Healy. I thought he had a real, his educational background, his knowledge, his approach to some of the answers were extremely good. Barry, again, same thing. You could tell, career guy, more soft-spoken, little bit different style there, which I liked it. But at the end, yes, Mr. Kenny had, I think, the, he's developed a maturity. He's young. He seems very excited.
Oh, yeah.
Very open.
And, and I think, yeah, I think for, to work with our existing outstanding force is, all three echoed. It's, it probably, it will bring us to a higher level, whereas the other two would maintain this high level. I think, for some reason, I think he's going to want to take us to even higher levels. And I think that's a benefit to the firefighters. It'll be a benefit to the community at, at large. So, I would, I will also agree. I think Mr. Kenny would make a fantastic selection.
Well, while I do enjoy being the only one on an island in some situations, I'm not going to be in this case, you know.
Ooh, you built it up, though.
Well, I had to do something to throw out there. You know, Mr. Barry was fantastic. His experience, his operational experience, more recent operational experience, actually being in there with the day-to-day was fantastic. I loved his creativity as it came to being able to rework numbers, to scale down a budget and to work within the parameters of our municipality. All fantastic. Mr. Healy, I think that he is part of more outside organizations than my kids play sports. That was unbelievable, the amount of different things that he has. And he's a part of, it's incredible experience that he would bring to the table. But Mr. Kenny, the way that he answered some of those questions, I think, is what set him apart. You know, when he talked about the input from external stakeholders when developing a budget to ensure that everybody was aligned on what was being put forth. That was great.
That was your language. He was singing you.
And did his research. Can't fault him for that. Just, you know, the slate of everything that you guys have said already, just, there's not really too much more I can add. I, I wholeheartedly agree.
Agreed.
Mr. Kenny is the selection.
Passed out of motion.
I don't know why I handed them one at a time. Just try to make a little flair.
All right. With all of that being said, I move that the board ratify the town administrator's recommendation to appoint Erin Kenny as the fire chief for the Town of Norfolk.
Seconded.
Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Thank you so much. And a job well done. Thank you.
Go out and talk to, talk to my new fire chief.
Well, that does it for this evening. Thank you so much, everybody. We appreciate you tuning in. We'll have another meeting next week. We do have a busy week this week. We do have office open hours for the select board tomorrow from 1:00 to 3:00 here at Town Hall. On Thursday, we have the community informational meeting on proposed zoning changes in downtown at 7:00 PM at Freeman Kennedy. And I do believe we have the Autism 5K coming up this weekend as well.
Without beer.
Without beer. Not really selling it, but it's out there coming up this weekend.
BYOB? No, probably not. In my little, my little water things. Just don't, just don't ask.
There we go. Do I, I move that we adjourn the meeting. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you.